I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Carr.
Here.
Carr, here. Cantello Zelman.
Here.
Cantello Zelman, here. Slattery.
Thanks.
Slattery absent. Klinker.
Here.
Klinker, here. Johnson.
Here.
Johnson, here. Alexander. Alexander absent. Bellato.
Here.
Bellato, here. Casadis.
Here.
Casadis, here. Rita. Rita absent. Donahue. Donahue absent. Holly.
Here.
Holly, here. Farenwald.
Here.
Farenwald, here. Hill.
Here.
Hill, here. Meck.
Here.
Meck, here. Eight present, your honor.
Thank you very much. I don't count myself as being...
No, excuse me, ten. I'm sorry.
Okay, we got it. May I move on to presentation of general proceedings? I need a motion to approve the city council minutes for the date of November the 12th, 2019. Do I have a motion? By Alderman Cantello Zelman, do I have a second? By Alderman Klinker, any questions? Roll call, please.
Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Cantello Zelman.
Aye.
Cantello Zelman, aye. Klinker.
Aye.
Klinker, aye. Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Casadis.
Aye.
Casadis, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farenwald.
Aye.
Farenwald, aye. Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Meck.
Aye.
Meck, aye. Ten ayes, your honor.
Thank you very much. Next, we move on to public comment. And let me move on. For the city officials on behalf of the city employees, all its staff, my family, happy Thanksgiving to all of you. Blessings, and we count our blessings that we've gone through this year and ask for future blessings in the future. And an announcement, I know the Aldermen are going to make an announcement about the Christmas light parade, but again, as a reminder, December the 7th, starting early afternoon, and they can probably give more specifics exactly what's happening, at what times, and at what locations, but put in your calendar, Christmas in Blue Island or the Christmas light parade, the market and festivities, the carriage rides, things at the library, all over town. And then the restaurants and the businesses being open late throughout the city that particular day. Again, that's for the Christmas light parade. Now I have the pleasure, and I'm going to ask the family of Mr. Sanovio Howard Martinez, if they want to meet me at the podium. We can have him, you know what, we can have him sit there. It's much easier for him. You know, come down to...
Yes.
I had mentioned about this gentleman a couple weeks ago, the last city council meeting. What an honor, again, to be amongst you as a family. We all grew up in the same neighborhood. Mr. Martinez was present with you. If you don't know him, he's a gentleman sitting right in front of us. A gentleman here with a cane. A gentleman who is 100 years old, young.
All right, all right.
And I have the pleasure, on behalf of all of us, to read the following resolution. And it reads as follows. Honoring the accomplishments and legacy of Mr. Sanovio Howard Martinez. Whereas Mr. Sanovio Howard Martinez was born on October the 30th, 1919, in the city of Blue Island in Illinois. And whereas Mr. Sanovio Howard Martinez spent his early years in Blue Island, as the son of Celso Martinez Senior and Maria Martinez, and the second eldest siblings of Consuelo, Gregorio, Zavala, and Celso Junior. And whereas Mr. Sanovio Howard Martinez, after graduating from Paul Revere Grammar School in 1933, attended Blue Island Community High School, and whereas Mr. Sanovio Howard Martinez enlisted in the United States Army on March 3rd, 1942, at the height of World War II, after Japan surprised preemptive aerial attack on Pearl Harbor, to serve and to protect his beloved country, the United States of America, against the onslaught of the three Axis world powers, including but not limited to Nazi Germany, the Kingdom of Italy, and Imperial Japan. And whereas Mr. Sanovio Howard Martinez was stationed at Camp Grant, now Fort Sheridan, Hywood, Illinois, and his tours sent him to the utmost regions of the earth, and you're going to be astounded as to what we're going to read, including Algeria, French Morocco, Tensia in North Africa, Sicily, and Anzio in Italy, Germany, and culminating in Salzburg in Austria. And whereas Mr. Sanovio Howard Martinez served the United States military branch of the Army under five-star General Omar Nelson Bradley in the 7th Army, 3rd Infantry Division, one of the Army's premier assault units nicknamed "The Rock of the Marine," the 41st AAA anti-aircraft artillery, as an artillery half-track 50 caliber machine gun runner and as a paraglider. And whereas Mr. Sanovio Howard Martinez bravely fought in various battles across Europe, including in 1942, the Western Task Force Operation Torch, Allied invasion of North Africa, and 1942 Tensia campaign, the 1943 Sicilian campaign, the 1944 Operation Shingle Battle on Anzio, Italy, and the 1944 German campaign, and the 1945 Salzburg Austrian campaign. And whereas Mr. Sanovio Howard Martinez was awarded the United States Army Ribbon Bar Medal, consisting of three battle stars for his service in North Africa, Italy, and Germany, and the spearhead for his service in the Anzio Beachhead, and the French Fronteral Rope of Courage shoulder cord for his service in North Africa. And whereas Mr. Sanovio Howard Martinez was honorably discharged in October 1945 from the United States Army after his tour of duty in World War II, and returned to Blue Whereas Mr. Sanovio Howard Martinez in 1945 returned to work for the Rock Island Railroad Line. And whereas Mr. Sanovio Howard Martinez in 1982 retired from service from the Rock Island Line after faithfully serving his company for 41 years. And whereas Mr. Sanovio Howard Martinez has but one remaining sibling, his younger brother, Celso J. Martinez Junior, and his family, Leonore Evans, the wife, Rosemary and Sandra, the daughters, Raoul and Celso III, the sons, John Kilnun, grandson, along with many cousins, nephews, nieces, grandnieves, grandnieces, great-grandnephews, and great-grandnieces. And whereas Mr. Sanovio Howard Martinez on October the 30th, 2019, realized and celebrated his centennial birthday here in Blue Island. And whereas Mr. Sanovio Howard Martinez continues to inspire present and future generations, not only of his immediate family, relatives, and friends, but also past, present, and future generations of soldiers, with the accomplishments, the contributions, and the endeavors that the Mexican-American soldier has given to and has sacrificed for this great country of ours. And now therefore it be resolved by the mayor, the city council, the city of Blue Island, the community of Cook in St. Illinois, to hereby acknowledge the efforts of Mr. Sanovio Howard Martinez to ensure equality, justice, and dignity for all people of the United States of America, and we're going to pass it this 26th day of November, 2019. I need a motion by Alderman Bellato, second by Alderman Johnson. I need a roll call.
Sure. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Cantello Zelman.
Aye.
Cantello Zelman, aye. Klinker.
Aye.
Klinker, aye. Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Casadis.
Aye.
Casadis, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farenwald.
Aye.
Farenwald, aye. Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Meck.
Aye.
Meck, aye. Ten ayes, your honor.
On behalf of the city of Blue Island, I'm honored, as well as they are, to have you amongst us, as not only as a resident of the city of Blue Island, as a military man, for serving your country and your city, and for being a resident and civilian, and showing us how to live in peace amongst your neighbors. And I would appreciate it if the Aldermen would stand in the time of this man of being 100 years old and showing us what it is to be an American, what is it to be a Blue Island resident. Thank you very much. Does any family ever want to say something briefly? No? That answer's sad, but again, we grew up, or at least I grew up on Irving, along with the parents, the cousins, the relatives. You've always been family to us. You've always been family to us. And we appreciate, and what an honor does it be to amongst a gentleman like this, and it goes how it is, a gentleman being here and a soldier, a patriot of what it is to be a soldier and American. We're in front of history right here, and we're all honored to be in front of us. Thank you very much, on behalf of us, all of us here in Blue Island. Thank you very much. Anybody wants to take the pictures, Alderman? Why don't we come back in and just take a picture of anybody behind us? Can he stand up? Yeah. You know what, we'll have the Alderman there, and then we'll have him there. This is a once-in-a-lifetime. Literally, this is a once-in-a-lifetime.
Bring the chair up, and let him sit in the chair.
Yeah, that'd be fun. They're going to have to sit right there. The family also, oh, the family can come. You're part of this, so whoever wants to take a picture. Yes. Family can be behind them. Can we do it here, or this is going to be blocking it, right? Look at all this, it's, there we go. Very good. Thank you, sir. Should be going on the wall of pain. You got it? Yep. Thank you very much, everybody. Thank you. I didn't break the camera. Yeah?
I have no business, but I do have one minor little thing that I want to bring to the Alderman's attention, that typically, historically, we've gotten, we've canceled the second meeting in December, but I do want to point out that there's five Tuesdays in December, so if we did not have a second meeting in December, the next meeting we would have would be the 14th of January, so just, and any kind of planning you have for your committees or whatever, or anything that needs to be passed city council, we might want to consider not canceling the second meeting, which would be the 17th of December.
And I think there's an issue regarding the levy that needs to be addressed out also, so let's keep that in mind, that it needs to be voted on by the 17th of December. Go ahead.
I just want to clarify, it's the 2nd and 3rd then in December, so the Aldermen know to make an adjustment in their calendar, not Christmas Eve.
Right.
Right, yes, it will not be Christmas Eve.
10th and 17th, right.
The ordinance, the ordinance says 2nd and 4th Tuesday, except from December 2nd and 3rd.
We've never done the 3rd.
Right, so when we cancel the quote-unquote "second" meeting, I just put, we canceled the second meeting, not any specific date.
So we're agreeable that we're going to meet here at the time of December?
17th.
17th?
10th and 17th.
Okay. Unless we have to do an emergency or something.
Yeah.
All right. Any other thing, City Clerk? Any bits?
No other business, no.
City Treasurer's not here, I know he's attending a couple wakes.
Yeah. We do need to approve the transfers.
We need a motion for the transfer of inter-fund transfers, correct?
Yes.
From our restricted, restricted accounts, I need a motion by Alderman Bellato, second by Alderman Hill. Ringo Hill, any questions? Roll call, please.
Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Cantello Zelman.
Aye.
Cantello Zelman. Klinker.
Aye.
Klinker, aye. Johnson.
Nope.
Johnson, no. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Casadis.
Aye.
Casadis, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farenwald.
Aye.
Farenwald, aye. Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Meck.
Aye.
Meck, aye. Nine ayes and one no, your honor.
Thank you very much. Next, there's a cash collection receipt report, I guess that's just a report.
That's just a, yeah.
And then there's no treasurer announcements, and that's city attorney, any, anything?
Aye. Nothing, City Attorney, your honor, but I do want to let the council know that the pension consolidation bill, the police and fire pension consolidation bill has passed, but the governor hasn't signed it, so I'll give you an update after the governor signs it, just to hit the high points, so you understand where we're at. So probably next week.
Thank you very much. Committee reports, committee development committee.
Thank you, Mayor. All right, so we got a couple things, we'll start off with some minutes. We met with, we had a special meeting on Wednesday, November 20th at 6:00 PM. The only thing on the agenda was open discussion of the cannabis, either in favor or against, letting the public come and speak. We had about 30 people in attendance, and 10 people spoke. Out of the 10 people, eight were very much in favor, spoke at length in favor of it. The two people that, they weren't against or in favor, but had concerns on security, location, transparency, when, transparency of license that would be granted, and inspections. So overwhelming response in favor of allowing cannabis in Blue Island. The meeting ended at 6:45. At 7 o'clock, we opened our regular community development meeting. The only person in attendance for the public was the owner of Famous Cuts, he had issue with LED lighting. Under new business, the Chicago Public Art Group gave a brief update on five locations along Western Avenue that would be ideal to install murals. Part of our business development plan is to have murals along Western Avenue, so that committee's been talking about this for a while, and I met, along with Kevin Brown, Sarah Brown from the Chamber, Kevin Brown from the Historical Society, and the Chicago Art Group, and we walked up and on Western Avenue and talked to business owners. Five locations were granted permission. The committee agreed that we should continue looking into possibly doing a few, maybe even just one for next summer, just so we get the ball rolling on doing some public art in the town. Motion was made by Bellato, seconded by Casaros, to allow the owner of 2122 Grove Street to appeal the zoning board after the expired time has elapsed. All ayes, motion carried. There was a motion by Holly, seconded by Meck, to approve the CDC minutes from October 9th. All ayes, motion carried. Motion by Bellato, seconded by Holly, to make recommendations and a consensus to allow Beggars Pizza, location at 12660 Western Avenue, to add a drive-through to that location. The committee had several requests, along with the permission to do this. Within six months from date of occupancy, we're going to re-review how the traffic is working out for the drive-through, and to make any additional recommendations at that time. We also asked for more trees, landscaping, signage, parking, directionals for one-way entrance for parking, so it wouldn't back up on Western Avenue. So in general, we approved the drive-through, we just sort of want to re-review it in about six months. The awning for Corona title was tabled. There was a motion by Holly, seconded by Casaros, to deny a peddler's license to Daniel Blaylock for 3301 Wyerton Road. All ayes, motion carried. The committee reinforced, again, that we have never approved any peddler's licenses in the city. If anybody's peddling at your door, they're trying to sell you something, utilities, whatever, call the police, call the building department. They shouldn't be doing it, they need a license, and we've never granted one in years that I've been on the council here. There was a consensus to pursue excavating and resurfacing the city parking lot on Western Avenue, south of Vermont Street, right next to the Dunkin' Donuts on Vermont, because of safety concerns, there's parts that really dipped down, and probably stemming from a building that was demolished there in the, in the 80s, so it's settling in certain areas. So the committee's going to discuss with Robinson Engineering, which Eric has already jumped on this, and getting estimates, and getting more concrete estimates, to see if we can resurface that for next year. And there's money in a city line item budget for parking lots, and any difference would come out of the business district if we pursued doing that, so we'll have more information at the next meeting. Chairman Bellato gave a summary of the ongoing issues along Longwood Avenue, a report from Watch Group 37, and Robinson Engineering was discussed and added to my records. The committee agreed that these needs to be remediated ASAP, and since then, we had some follow-up information coming from Robinson Engineering, and I think it was discussed at Finance, that some of those things might be remediated soon. Motion by Bellato, seconded by Casaros, to appoint David Johnson, Anna Wessner, Nubia Chavez, and Sofia Sierra Aguilera to the Census 2020 Committee, with David Johnson acting as chair. All ayes, motion carried. All four members have been notified, along with the mayor's office, and the mayor's office already responded to the four members, granting them permission to use the space, and they should be calling a first meeting soon. If anybody else is interested in serving on this, please contact myself or the mayor's office, and we can use the help to get the complete count correct for 2020 census. Motion by Holly, seconded by Meck, to approve an improvement completion agreement with IDOT of the Cal-Seg Trail West segment. All ayes, motion carried. That's going to be on the agenda tonight. Motion by Bellato, seconded by Alexander, to approve an intergovernmental agreement with the South suburban land bank for the acquisition of certain properties through the abandonment proceedings. All ayes, motion carried. That'll also be on the agenda tonight. Motion by Cantello, seconded by Holly, a motion to approve an intergovernmental agreement with RTA regarding installation of inter-agency signage. The committee also asked Mark Miller to get permission to also, if we need to, or would like to, add our own signage to their poles. He's going to verify on that. All ayes, motion carried. Motion by Casaros, seconded by Holly, to approve the sale of 12751 Lincoln Street, Blue Island, Illinois. All ayes, motion carried. Howard Capari gave an update on the new library signage and the awning at St. Benunix. There was a motion by Bellato, seconded by Holly, to approve two appraisals on MWRD land regarding the Bios Farm, so that can continue to move forward, to allow Bios Farm to stay at the same location on Canal Street that they've been for the last five years. All ayes, motion carried. Mark Miller gave an update on the potential soccer field in the Velodrome and MWRD property, and MWRD is concerned with finalizing the Bios contract first. Chairman Bellato also offered the Park District as a possible option to further the recreational development of the property. Mark Miller gave an update on creating and expanding the TIFs to make them touch for additional funding for street resurfacing. The policy on waiving flat work fees was tabled, for clarification. The policy on farm animals was also tabled, for clarification. The draft nuisance property ordinance was tabled, for additional information. There was no additional information current in regards to the Fire Museum. Brian Poulos gave the building department report. Sarah Brown gave the marketing report. Howard Capari gave an update on zoning, the possible inclusion of language concerning Amazon truck parking, or parking of trucks on parking lots in general. We have nothing in our codes right now, we might have to put something in our codes regarding that. There being no additional business discussed, motion by Cantello, seconded by Meck, to end the meeting at 9:00 PM. So those are my minutes from our last meeting. So tonight, I have a few motions. The first one is ordinance number 2019-055, an ordinance of the city of Blue Island, Cook County, Illinois, approving an intergovernmental agreement between the South suburban land bank and Development Authority and the city of Blue Island for the acquisition of certain properties through abandonment proceedings. Is there a motion?
We got a motion, seconded by Alderman Casadis. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Cantello Zelman.
Aye.
Cantello Zelman, aye. Klinker.
Aye.
Klinker, aye. Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Casadis.
Aye.
Casadis, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farenwald.
Aye.
Farenwald, aye. Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Meck.
Aye.
Meck, aye. Ten ayes, your honor.
Thank you very much.
All right. Our ordinance, I'm second one. Ordinance number 2019-056, an ordinance of the city of Blue Island, Cook County, Illinois, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the Regional Transportation Authority, the RTA, and the city of Blue Island regarding installation and maintenance of inter-agency signage.
We got a motion, do we have a second? By Alderman Holly, any questions?
I just, yes, go ahead. Quick comment, I think it's a great thing. Signs probably don't sound like that big of a deal, but I think this is actually a pretty big deal for the town. The real estate sites like Zillow and so forth, one of the things that they list about houses is it's called a walk score. And the higher the walk score, like if you have 100, you can walk everywhere, get everything you need, you basically don't need a car. And that's a real, you know, it's a real incentive, and it's a big selling point for Blue Island, because we are a transit-rich community. You know, as by way of comparison, I have some relatives, live out in Plainfield, lovely home, not criticizing them. But they're, they have a walk score of three, and I think it's because they have a sidewalk for their house. My house has like a 73, if you live a little bit closer to the train station, you get up over 80, and it's a selling point. So I think that having this, there, how many signs have we been talking about? It's a lot of signs.
A lot.
That are going to enable people, going to create a greater awareness in town of the availability of transit, which is really important, because I think a lot of people don't still know where, how you can get a lot of places from this town via transit, and it's a big advantage. So it's going to create awareness, it's going to help people, you know, navigate their way around town better. And I think frankly, it's going to just kind of be a little bit more attractive, to have some new signs in town. So I just want to congratulate the committee and the city, and I think it's a really fine thing that we've got this thing.
Yeah, we asked them if we can design them, they're standard signs, so. But eventually, we'll put our own wayfinding signs, and if it's compatible, we'll use the same poles if it's convenient, so.
Yeah, that's great. Okay, good.
We got a motion, second? Roll call.
Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Cantello Zelman.
Aye.
Cantello Zelman, aye. Klinker.
Aye.
Klinker, aye. Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Casadis.
Aye.
Casadis, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farenwald.
Aye.
Farenwald, aye. Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Meck.
Aye.
Meck, aye. Ten ayes, your honor.
Thank you very much.
Finally, I have a resolution number 2019-039, a resolution authorizing the execution of an agreement with IDOT for an improvement completion in the Cal-Seg Trail, the West segment from Francisco to Ashland Avenue, with work, I believe, early spring. Is that right, Eric? Do you know? Early spring, I think?
Yeah, this one I have to fix.
Yeah, yeah. So we should finally have our section of the trail this summer.
So you got a motion, you got a second, by Alderman Holly. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Cantello Zelman.
Aye.
Cantello Zelman, aye. Klinker.
Aye.
Klinker, aye. Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Casadis.
Aye.
Casadis, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farenwald.
Aye.
Farenwald, aye. Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Meck.
Aye.
Meck, aye. Ten ayes, your honor.
Thank you very much. Anything else, Alderman?
Under the community development, no, but I'll read the finance once, please.
That's fine. Okay, so now we go into the finance committee?
All right, our finance committee, I have a motion for approval of accounts payable, check proof, for November 27, 2019, for the amount of $532,894.68.
Got a motion, do we have a second? By Alderman Hill, any questions? Roll call, please.
Carr.
Aye.
Farenwald, aye. Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Meck.
Aye.
Meck, aye. Nine ayes and one no, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Next, we have a motion for approval of payroll for November 15th, any amount of...
I'm sorry. Go ahead. It wasn't ten ayes.
No, it was nine.
Oh, I'm sorry, nine and one. I apologize.
All right, so we have a motion for approval of payroll for November 15th, for $329,263.96.
Got a motion, do you have a second? By Alderman Hill. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Cantello Zilman.
Aye.
Cantello Zilman, aye. Clinker.
Aye.
Clinker, aye. Johnson.
No.
Johnson, no. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Casadis.
Aye.
Casadis, aye. Hawley.
Aye.
Hawley, aye. Farenwald.
Aye.
Farenwald, aye. Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Meck.
Aye.
Meck, aye. Nine ayes and one no, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Next, we have a motion for the amount of the levy, and the levy has to sit for a minimum of twenty days and will have to pass it by the last Tuesday in December, so we're going to have to officially vote on it again at one of the meetings in December. So we have a motion for approval of $8,946,296 for the tax levy for this year. We got a motion.
Do you have a second, by Alderman Carr? Any questions?
That's available for viewing in City Hall.
Okay. Any questions? If not, roll call, please.
Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Cantello Zilman.
Aye.
Cantello Zilman, aye. Clinker.
Aye.
Clinker, aye. Johnson.
No.
Johnson, no. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Casadis.
Aye.
Casadis, aye. Hawley.
Aye.
Hawley, aye. Farenwald.
Aye.
Farenwald, aye. Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Meck.
Aye.
Meck, aye. Nine ayes and one no.
Thank you.
Our ordinance Number 2019-054, an ordinance authorizing and providing for the issuance of and not to exceed $1,550,000 general obligation limited tax bond, Series 2019, of the City of Blue Island, Cook County, Illinois, and for the levy of the direct annual tax sufficient to pay the principal and interest on said bonds and approving a tax escrow agreement.
Got a motion, do you have a second? By Alderman Hill. Any questions? Alderman.
Comment. I am going to vote in favor of this because it's necessary, unfortunately. This lev, this bond will pay for the settlement of the lawsuit by former police officer Haro, and it is not only going to then cost the city one and a half million dollars, but there have been, you know, well north of another million dollars spent defending this suit to this point. So, you know, we're looking at an expenditure of taxpayer funds of like, you know, three million dollars plus, and I would just like to make sure that we're all aware of what we're voting for tonight, because as again I say, we really have no choice. We have to settle this matter, but it's cost a lot, and it started in 2005. One young boy, Robbie Silver, was killed by a hit-and-run driver, and of course, that's tragic, and there's really nothing you can say that makes it any less so. About three years later, Robbie's mother complained to Detective Haro about the lack of progress in the case, and he initiated a review of the case and became concerned about the lack of information in his files, missing leads and reports and the false claims about the witness's polygraph. Now, I gotta say that what I'm telling you here is taken from the lawsuit filed by Haro, and these are unproven, because it's never gone to trial and never will, because they've got such a strong case that we're settling. But nevertheless, these are the allegations. These are not known facts, but there's a lot of allegations. There was a possible suspect identified in the hit-and-run, and that person had a relationship involving political support for one of the defendants in the suit, and the suspect's mother is alleged to have implicated her son in the incident. The suspect subsequently moved to Florida and is alleged to have told a girlfriend there that he killed a person in Illinois. The vehicle, the suspected vehicle in the hit-and-run was allegedly stored and partially covered with a tarp, and that same vehicle had previously been issued twelve parking tickets, all of which had been voided by someone in the Blue Island Police Department. The politically connected towing company subsequently scrapped or crushed the vehicle. A second polygraph of the witness eventually indicated that she was being deceptive, who was involved, when asked if the suspect had told her that he had hit young Robbie. The Harrow lawsuit, which we are, as I said earlier, going to settle for like $1.3 million, contends that the defendant engaged in an effort to engage in punitive and unusual disciplinary actions that would either result in Haro being terminated from the force or leaving. And Howard notes that no other officer in the history of the department had ever been suspended for more than thirty days, unlike the total of 180 days for which he had been suspended. It must again be emphasized that these are all allegations, never been proven, but it should also be noted that they are based on years of discovery and depositions of Blue Island police officers and other officials. And I would, if you do read the other, the suit, and I again urge everyone here to read it and make your own conclusion, you know, I can repeat these things and tell you, but I think, you know, the most effective thing is to read it. It's actually an unfortunately engaging document. You will likely be left with the unmistakable feeling that this much smoke seems to indicate a fire somewhere. So we are faced now with the likely, with the settlement that's in the process of being done, and the results is that the, many of you in this room, if you're a taxpayer in the City of Blue Island, you are going to be paying, you personally, for this settlement, just as I will and everyone up here. So unfortunately, it's necessary that we do this, because we have to settle the lawsuit, and I will vote in favor of it, but it's with real regret.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? Alderman, go ahead.
Yeah, you know, my thing is, the people that was implicated in this, in this lawsuit, I think they need to ante up some of that money, too.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Roll call, please.
Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Cantello Zilman.
Aye.
Cantello Zilman, aye. Clinker.
Aye.
Clinker, aye. Johnson.
No.
Johnson, no. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Casadis.
Aye.
Casadis, aye. Hawley.
Aye.
Hawley, aye. Farenwald.
Aye.
Farenwald, aye. Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Meck.
Aye.
Meck, aye. Nine ayes and one no, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Finally, a resolution 2019-040, a resolution appointing an authorized agent at an act to behalf of the City of Blue Island with respect to all official business concerning the Own and Misful Retirement Fund. With our vacancy of our finance director, I think temporarily, the mayor's going to be, right?
That's correct.
So the mayor's going to be the IMRA agent for the employees. That's just overseeing transfers for the pension funds, so we just need a motion.
Got a motion, do you have a second? By Alderman Hill. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Cantello Zilman.
Aye.
Cantello Zilman, aye. Clinker.
Aye.
Clinker, aye. Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Casadis.
Aye.
Casadis, aye. Hawley.
Aye.
Hawley, aye. Farenwald.
Aye.
Farenwald, aye. Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Meck.
Aye.
Meck, aye. Ten ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, so as I said, the police chief had a bunch of things that we needed to move on to finance, so those will get sent to finance next week. We've already made sure that the finance chair knows that and everything. The one thing that I'd just like to mention that we talked about and just kind of bring it out in the open, it'll be in the report next month, is we talked about possibly the city hiring a grant writer, because I know both chiefs talked about needs for equipment in the fairly near future. The police chief's talking about million-dollar fire trucks and, you know, that kind of stuff, and I believe as someone said, I think it was Alderman Johnson, we used to have a grant writer.
Yes.
That kind of worked on a commission or worked on a percentage of what she brought in. So that's something that the committee's going to, it'll be in the report recommended, but I just kind of thought it was important to get that out now.
All right, thank you very much.
That's it.
Thank you.
Municipal Services Committee? Can you report?
Yes, Your Honor. We've got a report for the meeting of November the 12th. Present were Jim Colstrow, Betty Harmeyer, Bob Jackson, Eric Alvarez, Alderman Meck, Alderman Farenwald, and Alderman Carr. Absent were Ted Ruthenberg, Alderman Slattery, and Alderman Rita. Meeting was called to order at 6:01. The citizens concerned, citizens present were concerned about the proposed water projects which were being covered at 6:30 the same night during the public hearing and were referred to that meeting. Under Public Works, Jim Colstrow presented his report. He mentioned that because of the cold weather, the asphalt plants were now closed, most likely for the rest of the year. There was a motion by Alderman Farenwald, seconded by Alderman Meck, to approve the two handicap permits, one at 2322 Collins and one at 2451 Collins, and a rescind handicap. All in favor, motion carried. There was a motion by Alderman Farenwald, seconded by Alderman Meck, to approve an ordinance regarding permit parking only on certain portions of Canal Street. All in favor, motion carried. I'd like to point out that these ordinances were presented at the last city council meeting, so they've already been proven by the council also. Under the Water Department, Betty Harmeyer gave her monthly report. Under the John D. Rita Recreation Center, Bob Jackson gave his monthly report on the rec center. He included a list of requests for use of the rec center along with copies of proof of insurance. Mr. Jackson presented the committee with photos of the damage done to the rec center sign and the estimated cost of repair. He indicated that Per Mike Marzel, the family of the offender, would be sent a bill for the repairs, the repairs were approved. Mr. Jackson also presented a request for a new snow blower. The request was granted and sent to the finance committee. Under the Meadows Golf Course, there was no report. Under Robinson Engineering, Eric Alvarez gave an update on ongoing projects. He also presented the committee a draft of a letter to be sent to the MWRD requesting permission to replant the rain gardens with salt-tolerant grasses. Alderman Meck presented the committee and the audience with video footage of a test done on the paving projects in the Fifth Ward, showing that permio pavement had been used in the areas specified by the contracts. Michelle Roscoe asked about future projects that would help alleviate the flooding problems. There was a motion to adjourn by Alderman Meck, seconded by Alderman Farenwald, motion carried. Meeting was adjourned at 6:50 PM. Our next regular meeting will be Tuesday, December the 10th, at 6:05.
Thank you very much, Alderman. Judiciary Committee, any report?
We didn't meet.
All right, that's fine. Any Aldermanic announcements or comments?